....................................... Damas y caballeros, es momento para iniciar nuestras presentaciones antes de iniciar... Normalmente es...
The center podium where we have a special presentation by the council member from the 4th District, the Honorable Tom Labange. Mr. Labange, please.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mayor of Los Angeles. Let's give Mark Ridley-Thomas, he's the acting mayor, give him a big hand right there, running the city council. I'd like to ask that Councilman Pacheco will join with me. As you know, this is one of the great buildings in, I think, in the United States. And in Los Angeles, there's several great buildings. I love the observatory. Thanks to the help of the governor and on the state legislature, we're going to renovate the observatory, the friends of the observatory. But one of the other great, absolutely fabulous buildings in Los Angeles is located in the 14th District at 800 North Alameda, it's Union Station. And I have me, I have with me this morning someone very special, for he was the first person to arrive on a passenger train at Los Angeles Union Station on May 7th, 1939, because he jumped out of that railroad car and sprinted into the station. Please give a warm welcome to Mr. Ralph Peck.
Ninety-seven.
God, he liked the, remember that song, "The Reckless Old Ninety-Seven"?
Yes, sir.
This is, this young man is ninety-seven years old. And better than that, he's been married for seventy-one years. Ralph, we wanted to bring you down to council chambers here in Los Angeles because just recently in Trains Magazine, they had a whole story about the beautiful Union Station. And Tom Dillinger, Tom, come, Tom Dinger, excuse me, Tom Dillinger, I'm getting all my, that's because it was a train station for Hollywood. Tom Dinger, who's an engineer on the old Santa Fe line, but now runs Amtrak to San Diego. Tom told me about you, Ralph, and Councilman Pacheco and I thought it would be important to honor you. And I'm going to ask Tom to just say, as an engineer who's come into Union Station so many times, what, how important it is that we meet the first passenger of Union Station.
Well, when I'd heard the story from Shirley, the daughter, I thought, this is a very special occasion, this is a very special person that, and a very personable story that a lot of people would be interested in. So, we followed up and I told Tom about it. And so here we are. I'm very proud to have known his family and this is a special moment for everybody.
Thank you, Tom. Another, another Tom is Tom Buckley, who has railroaded his blood for over fifty years and worked at Union Station with Cattellus. Tom, a few words about the beautiful Union Station and what Ralph Peck means to the history.
Thank you, Tom. I was also there on opening day. I was just standing by the track and my dad was pulling the big railroad gun, fourteen-inch gun, from Fort MacArthur. And that led the parade on the official opening. But this gentleman, Mr. Peck, was the first passenger and I was just a spectator. Anyway, thank you.
I want to introduce Councilman Pacheco, who handles Union Station, all arrivals now.
Mr. President, colleagues, it just is a great honor to give this gift on behalf of Tom Labange and myself. As you know, I'm very blessed. I represent the 14th Council District, which has El Pueblo, the historic birthplace of Los Angeles, Union Station, the gateway to Los Angeles. So, Mr. Peck, congratulations. And ninety-seven years old is quite an achievement, but seventy-one years of marriage is even a greater achievement. So, congratulations. Congratulations.
Good job, Ralph. Get in there. We're going to have Ralph say something just in a moment. Get in here, Dorothy. That's a better picture. Five-four, look right, look right here. What it meant to be the first passenger. And I ask his family, Mr. President, did they always know about this bit of history? And they've always known about this history of their famous dad and grandfather and now honored by the city council. Ralph Peck, please.
All right, a big round of applause for Ralph Peck, please.
Well, my father was chief transport of the Santa Fe Railroad with officers in Chicago when I was born. And we traveled on the pass for a good many years. And trains kind of got into my, my system. And so when the opportunity came to be on the first train into the new Union Station, I was young and in my prime. It would take about three men and a small boy to get me up over into the window that I climbed out of to be the first passenger in the new Union Station. But I certainly thank you for this honor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peck, and we're delighted to have you in the council chamber today, Mr. Labange.
From someone who was the unique first passenger... From someone who was the unique first passenger of Union Station, we have a honor for someone who is a great publisher. And you know, all of us as council members know and we respect the great dailies that are produced, that circulate. But it's those community papers that really have an impact on our communities and our neighborhoods. And Marty Ruston, come on up here right now. He's the owner, publisher, editor of the Toluca Times and Canyon Choir. Dennis Zine, please join me. I would like to present a resolution to Marty Ruston, who was born in Iraq and graduated from the University of Chicago with a degree in business administration and received a fine arts degree at the Arts Institute in Chicago and a master's degree from the University of Southern California, where he hopes tomorrow the Trojans beat the Bruins in their annual classic.
That's the one I want to see, that's it.
Mr. Ruston founded Mars Production Company in 1969, where he co-produced and produced and directed more than twenty motion pictures and television programs, both in the United States and Europe. In addition, he also developed real estate and other things that have helped him amass a enterprise, which now he owns the, as the publisher of the renowned Toluca Times, one of the oldest publications in San Fernando Valley. He's also chairman of the Elections Committee of the Los Angeles Press Club, a former director of the California Newspaper Publishers Association, a member of the Producers Guild, National Association of Arab-Americans, the Burbank Lions, the Burbank Elks Club, the Los Angeles Zoo Friends of, and the Islamic Foundation of Southern California. He truly is a wonderful man who has a great heart. And council members, as a district representative, when you have a publisher of a paper who constantly informs the community about what is going on in a positive way, you get that from the Toluca Times and Marty Ruston. Not to say that sometimes he likes to run that editorial that gets me focused, he just keeps the heat on right. He's a positive force. I just wanted to salute him with this commendation and ask that my colleague, Dennis Zine, also benefits from the Canyon Choir and Toluca Times for some remarks. Mr. Zine, please.
Thank you. Did you go to John Marshall High School? Because everyone Tom Labange recognizes goes to John Marshall High School. So, we can make you an honorary member of John Marshall High School. I've known Marty for a number of years. He's got his family here with him this morning. And I know the good work you've done in the community, the peace that you want for this city, for this county, for the United States and for the world. And I know the effort that you've put in in that endeavor. So, I commend you for that. Thank you, Tom, for inviting me to the microphone to acknowledge and to recognize all the good work you've done and you'll continue to do. And I know that that Middle Eastern community reads that paper and you are the dialogue, you are the messenger, and you're delivering that message of peace and unity. And God bless you and your family for being there.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Marty. And also, Sarah Ruston, please join us, because just like Ralph and Dorothy behind you, they've been married forty-four years. So, we've got a lot of great marriages here today. But Marty Ruston, publisher of the Toluca Times, celebrated its sixty-fifth anniversary. We salute you with this commendation on this day, the twenty-second day of November two thousand and two. And Dennis, I'll move over to the right. Okay, good. Here we go. All right, put your hand on it, right like that. That's good. Great. Marty, for a few remarks.
Mr. President, honorable council members, I want to thank you very, very much on behalf of my wife and the Toluca staff for this honor. And we shall continue to publish the paper the way it has been done for the last many years. I just want to mention a couple of small items. First of all, when I came to this country in nineteen fifty-four, most of you were not even born. But once I came here, I was delighted to be here. I was accepted by an American family, which was around this time of the year, the Thanksgiving. They took me to their home. I'll never forget them. And I want to thank everybody. And I think, not I think, I know I'm blessed by God being here and being with my family. The other thing is, back in the early eighties, this paper belonged to Herald Examiner. Probably some of you would remember, some of you don't. Herald Examiner had this paper published, changed the format, did it in a regular news size, and they had leftover items from the Herald Examiner, published it, and it took the community news out of it completely and had derogatory news, like crimes and all that. My wife and I decided to keep the paper with the positive news and change the format to a tabloid and have nothing but good news about the community, about the children, about the award they get at high school, about the things they do in the sports arena, anything that was positive, we start publishing it. And because of that, I, we are very proud of the paper and we have a lot of supporters. We have over, now over a hundred thousand readership all over San Fernando Valley. Again, we thank you all. Thank you, Councilmen.
And thank you. And to your lovely wife, along with this proclamation resolution for you, we have this overpocket bread from the monastery of the angels. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Personally baked by Mr. Labange, I assure you, all right? Thank you. Another round of applause for these lovely people here today in the chamber.
Thank you. And Mr. President, members of council and the chambers, finally, we have here on the fortieth anniversary of the Korean-American Federation of Los Angeles. Last night, they had their wonderful banquet on, on Wilshire Boulevard. I got there late. But at the last moment, I said, I can't make my presentation because I was so late. So, could you come to council? They certainly wanted to come to council to be recognized. But the Korean-American Federation, on their fortieth annual banquet, we all have a brochure around our desk right now to look at. But they've had a great impact because the largest immigration from Asia has been the Korean-American people who have come to our city. And as they centralize, as I always say, in the Koreatown area, up they look Normandy Avenue to see Griffith Park, and they look at and they see what they call it, Namsung, Namsung Mountain, which is a big mountain in Seoul. There's a lot of Seoul right next to you right there, Mr. President. Anyway, on behalf of the mayor, on behalf of the council, we want to salute the Korean-American Federation of Los Angeles for forty dedicated years of making a strong impact and a difference by helping those who come to our country to understand all the issues that we have to deal with and to become better citizens of our community. Let me welcome Dr. Kewa Ha, president of the Federation, who's been active for the community for many years. Please welcome Dr. Kewa Ha.
First of all, I'd like to thank the president. He was there last night. Also, I'd like to thank all the members of councilmen. Last few months ago, the city is donate a piece of land to build a senior citizen center at Koreatown. So, with your help, you can able to find the land as well as we'll build a senior citizen center. So, also, yeah, in the brochure, then we have the president, Mark Ridley-Thomas, on the picture.
Thank you, Dr. Ha.
His generous donation is really helping us too. As Ed Reyes, I met him at the council meeting at the Korean Town Council Regent's. So, thank you for everybody.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reyes, for a comment.
Thank you, Councilman Ridley-Thomas. Dr. Kewa Ha, it was a pleasure meeting you. We met with the consulate, with Congressman Rosetta. It's great to see that we are establishing these links with our diverse cultures in our city. And to have leadership like yours allows us to strengthen our trade, to strengthen our understanding of our cultures and basically healing all those wounds that we felt as a city seven, eight years ago. So, we continue working together. So, thank you very much for your great effort.
And also recognize Francis Ha, who's the executive director. Let's again salute the Korean-American Federation for forty years of great service to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. We now recognize Mr. Pacheco for a presentation, followed by Mr. Zine. We have eight members present, two more to constitute a quorum. Those two members, we invite you to join us so that we can proceed with the business at hand. Mr. Pacheco.
We'll leave that one open on that side. Morning, Mr. President and colleagues. As you know, every once in a while, we come before you, both Council District thirteen and myself, Council District fourteen. We both have neighborhood leadership institutes going in our districts. And as you know, what we do is, we work with community residents who want to participate in government, who want to increase their knowledge of government. And we have an eight-week course where every evening they get together, talk about the issues in their communities, talk about what's important to them in the neighborhood. And most importantly, we bring out departments to work with them and to give them an insight on how to access city services. So, before I move on to our NLI graduates, I want to thank the Board of Public Works, Operation Clean Sweep, the Department of Public Works, the Bureau of Street Services, Bureau of Sanitation. Also want to thank the Department of Building and Safety, the Los Angeles Police Department, specifically our senior lead officers, the City Attorney's Office, and especially the neighborhood prosecutors, part of the neighborhood prosecutor program throughout our district, and the Department of Transportation. Today's group is the fourth graduating class that we have. They come from the entire district, Boa Heights, El Sereno, Highland Park, Eagle Rock. Just like everyone else, they have busy lives. They work, take care of their families, raise children. And every night, on a Wednesday for eight weeks, they would get together to learn about government and see how they can contribute to bettering their neighborhoods. One of the most important things I can tell you is that for them to graduate, they must, at the end, provide a presentation to myself as the council member with a work plan of issues and topics that they want to see improved in their neighborhood. Each one of them has their own individual work plans. Each group has their own work plan. And slowly but surely, we confront and go after solving those problems. So, we have a partnership with these individuals. They work very hard. They will be celebrating their graduation on Sunday, December eighth, with a dinner reception from four PM to six PM at El Mercadito Restaurant in Boa Heights. And for many of you who were here three years ago, when we tackled that whole issue at El Mercadito, you'd be very pleased to know that that, those puestos have now become legal, received all their permits, both from the city and county. And it took a couple of years, but we're very proud of the work that the owner of El Mercadito did and his assistance in recognizing these individuals. We want to thank him also. So, let me bring up our graduating class and call out the recipients and congratulate. Each one of these congratulations says, "This certificate is presented to you for successful completion of the eight-week train from the Council District fourteen Neighborhood Leadership Institute. Your commitment to the betterment of our neighborhood is what makes our city one of the best cities in the world to live in. Your selfless dedication is worthy of high admiration." So, let me bring up Monica Walters and congratulate Monica Walters. Alfonso Medina. Juanita Moya. José Ramos. Marta Varios. Josefina Lepe. His nephew? grandson? Concepción Acosta? Richard Acosta? Art Casillas? Robert Flores? Manny Hernandez? Doris Lau? Gabriel Nava? Maria Nava? Al Strange? Vanita Strange? Oscar Reyna? Lupe Romero? Ramon Romero? Maria Carrillo? Trini González? Mr. President, as you know, and as you can tell, we have people of all ages participating. Thank you, Mr. President, Madam President now, thank you. And one big round of applause for all the graduates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Chair would now like to recognize Councilmember Mark Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I'm pleased to recognize this morning the work of the Pat Brown Institute's Youth and Gang Violence Specialist Certificate Program. In September of the year two thousand, the city of Los Angeles agreed to fund a unique certification program for individuals providing gang intervention services throughout the city. The Youth Gang Violence Intervention Program is a one-hundred-and-twenty-hours, fifteen-weeks, one-of-a-kind program existing to certify qualified gang intervention workers to counsel youth at risk and gang members themselves. The classes are offered through the offices of Continuing Education on the campus of Cal State Los Angeles. Upon completion, participants earn twelve units and are awarded a certificate of completion through that very same university. The program is designed to improve the quality of services provided by violence intervention and prevention programs. The program provides an opportunity for participants to increase their level of expertise in gang intervention strategies by discussing and evaluating current practices with their peers. It increases the professional standing of gang intervention specialists by improving their knowledge of violence prevention strategies. The program is the only comprehensive gang intervention specialist certification program in the United States focused on the needs of the professional anti-gang violence workers. To date, the program has certified one-hundred-and-fifty persons. The program has spawned an increase in service coordination across agencies ranging from the San... across agencies ranging from the San Fernando Valley to San Pedro. I believe that these trained professionals will be very critical to our finding solutions and to responding to the effective ways that we can increase violence prevention strategies throughout our city. Therefore, it would be wise that during the next budget process, we ensure that this program stays in place and that funding is increased for the programs that they represent. So, Madam President, today I'm pleased to be joined by recent graduates of the program and to present this resolution to the Pat Brown Institute's Youth and Gang Intervention Specialist Program for their valuable contributions to the city of Los Angeles. I'm also joined by the person who has given a considerable amount of contact time and hours to leadership for this program, Bill Martinez, who is director. And it's on behalf of the entirety of the Los Angeles City Council that we submit this resolution to this program for the work that they are doing, the work that they will continue to do. For the need is quite clear in our city. And I believe programs of this sort can help make the difference. Bill?
Please.
Oh, great. Thank you. I want to thank the City Council for this opportunity to come down here with some of the graduates of the program. In April or in July, we had 27 graduates. And then just this last week, we had another 20 to join the forces out in the community. Most of them are behind me now. So I just want to acknowledge them and recognize them. Also that in addition to the certificate provided by the university, they're also being recognized by the State Assembly for the work that they've done and that they will be doing as a result of this program and this opportunity. I also have something. We have something that we want to provide to Mark Ridley Thomas to reflect our grateful thanks for him and the leadership that he's provided across the city of Los Angeles. And with me is Gilbert Sanchez, Director of the Gang Violence Bridging Project. So if he could step forward.
Good morning. My name is Gilbert Sanchez. I'm the Director of the Community Enhancement Programs for the Pat Brown Institute, including the Gang Violence Bridging Project. And at this time, we would like to also present this to Mr. Mark Ridley Thomas. It says, "The Pat Brown Institute of Public Affairs and Cal State University, Los Angeles, extends our heartfelt thanks to Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas for his years of outstanding service to the people and city of Los Angeles and your leadership in establishing the Youth and Gang Violence Intervention Specialist Training Program. Your thoughtful and compassionate approach to ending youth violence is a model for us all." Thank you.
The Chair, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Reyes.
Councilman Ridley Thomas, I know back in the mid-'90s, early-'90s, we were going through whole rashes of violence. And he demonstrated leadership along with other council members in packaging funds and made it a priority through Block Rant and through other programs. And in that process, I've seen this evolution of how we become more, I'm going to say, strategic in how we engage our young people. We just don't throw them in prison or be punitive, but through intervention, respect them, speak to them like individuals before they get to a point where there's no point of return. So for that, I want to thank you for showing that understanding. And perhaps with the new chief and new different approaches, we can learn from your experience, very real experiences, and truly become a community-based policing where perhaps they become part of the community as opposed to viewed as the enemy. So with that, I just want to thank you for your great work. Thank you, Councilman Ridley Thomas, for your leadership back when. The other council members who are no longer with us today, who are part of that process, and hopefully build upon those experiences. And my hats off to the Pat Brown Institute and Cal State for stepping up and thinking out of the box as an academic institution. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Reyes.
We thank you for the acknowledgement. But I wish for you to know that Mr. Reyes, among others, is prepared to take up this challenge of dealing with the issue of violence in our communities from a perspective not only of anti-violence, but non-violence. And Mr. Reyes, you've already begun to demonstrate that. And the Pat Brown Institutes and a whole Pat Brown Institute and a range of entities throughout the city look to you for leadership as well as the balance of the council. And so we thank you and we thank these men and women who are on the ground, helping to deal with the levels of violence in our community. I think they deserve another round of applause.
Madam Clerk, I believe, do we have a quorum yet? No, okay.
Madam President, if I may proceed.
Do so, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Once again, Madam President, there are those among us who are making their mark on our city. And they are doing so, sometimes in a quiet way. But we wish to commend the Exposition Park Intergenerational Community Youth Employment Program. And I want to ask those persons who are here for this presentation to please join me. The Exposition Park Intergenerational Community Center, or EPIC, is currently under construction. Located just south of the Coliseum, this is a $30 million project, which will consist of an 80,000-square-foot recreation center, a swim stadium, a childcare center, a senior center, and an amphitheater. Once completed, this unique facility will be the premier recreational complex in the city and the largest such facility in Southern California. Nearly a decade of planning, fundraising, and construction have gone into this effort. It's a tremendous project and one which the city should be very proud of. One of the many success stories related to this project has been its youth employment program. Early on in the process, it was decided that local participation and youth training related to construction of this project would be a priority. The prevailing wages and trade apprenticeships associated with this construction should provide economic opportunities for the local community. That was our perspective and it remains so. And while we all strive toward that end, most projects do not meet those goals. It is easy to say, but much harder to accomplish. Contractors, for the most part, are reticent to take part in these programs. It's another layer of red tape. And for the most part, their construction crews are already in place and there are limited, if any, opportunities for new hires. So we're often told. These limitations, with affirmative action being curtailed and a range of other things that have been unfavorable, have really militated against our being able to do what we need to do in terms of local hiring. But for this project, the prime contractor, CW Driver, hired Opportunity Marketing Group under the directorship of Jan Bennett to devise a youth employment program. And to date, the program has exceeded its workforce composition goals. 10% of the total workforce have been youth. 65% of the workforce have been minorities. And 20% are, in fact, from the local community. The young men and women involved with this project have gained valuable apprenticeship experience as carpenters, drywallers, electricians, ironworkers, painters, plumbers, and metal sheet workers. Larry Jones is one of the young people working at this site. And Larry, let's see, where's Larry? Give him a big round of applause, won't you? 21-years-old, a resident of the greater Los Angeles area. He was originally hired on the project back in June of 2001. Over 15 months ago, Larry has gained experience in carpentry, masonry, asphalt patching, and forklift operation. He began as a first-period apprentice and now is a third-period apprentice. There are 23 other young men, just like Larry, who have also been given a chance to work with this project. And for the most part, they have taken advantage and benefited from this opportunity. And it has opened the door for a solid career in the construction industry. It is my hope that similar programs will be implemented in the future for large-scale projects throughout the city. And so it is on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council that I would like to recognize the team effort that has helped to make this program a success. And there are some familiar faces and names that have been pushing forward to make this happen. And I would just want to take an opportunity to call them by name. The Chairman of the Board of EPIC is our own former CEO, Keith Comrie. Give Keith a big round of applause, will you? The Executive Director of EPIC is Belinda Jackson with the Department of Recreation and Parks. Belinda, we appreciate your being here. Mark Mariscal is the Superintendent for the region that represents the EPIC project. And he was a former Executive Director. Mark, we appreciate your persistence and leadership. Give him a hand, please. Jan Bennett, who is the President of Opportunity Marketing Group, who has done the actual hiring and coordinating. Give Jan a big round of applause, please. And Michael Lincoln with the Opportunity Group is joining her. Michael, we thank you. And finally, the project manager for this project is none other than Steve Beck. Detailed, hard-driving, and we appreciate you, Steve. Take a bow. We want to acknowledge you. And representing the primary, the prime contractor, is Channing Lacon and Jeff Barra from CW Driver. Ladies and gentlemen, give this team of people who are doing the right thing in our community a big round of applause. Now, there's a big fellow who thinks he ought to take the mic, and I'm not going to argue with him. His name is the one and only Shelby Jordan.
On behalf, on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Exposition Park and the Generational Center, we want to thank Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas for his unwavering support on this very important project for the city of Los Angeles. Truly, Exposition Park is one of the treasures of this city. On behalf of the Board, I want to acknowledge several Board members who are not here, who's been there since the beginning. Keith Comrie, whose name has already been mentioned. Tom Moran, Vice President of Business Affairs at the University of Southern California. Roy Anderson and John Ulay from the Weingard Foundation, responsible for bringing $10 million for this project. And Keith Rankin, a very prominent CPA. All of these men, whose names I've called, have taken time from their very busy schedules to invest their energies and their intelligence in a project that will benefit this community and the city of Los Angeles for many years to come. On behalf of the Board of Directors for the Exposition Park and the Generational Center, we want to say thank you.
Madam President, Shelby Jordan, as many of you will know, is one of our premier nonprofit developers, making his mark on residential and institutional development along Vermont Avenue. A former Raider, don't hold that against him. Former Patriot, we can celebrate that. And in the hunt to help us do the right thing with respect to the return of NFL football to the city of Los Angeles. And Mr. Pacheco, if you wanted it at Adelante and if someone else who wants it downtown, we'll have to arm wrestle about it. Thank you, Mr. Laban.
Before you leave the room there, I want to congratulate all those who have been involved in the Exposition Park revitalization. And Mark, I especially want to congratulate you. I know next week you'll be moving or in a few weeks on to the State Assembly. But what is so great, Mark, is how you've put this all together. And you've done some very fine things that's going to have a lasting impact. Exposition Park was a place that needed a lot of love. And you brought a lot of people together who had that love and determination and worked together. And again, as we talked this morning about the great buildings of the city, City Hall, the Observatory, Union Station, we talk right now about great parks. Exposition Park is absolutely right up there. I'm prejudiced to Griffith Park, but your park, Exposition Park in your district, though, entertains, educates, and excites so many people. I'm just proud of what you've done in this area here because it's so important. So congratulations, and a special congratulations. I have no shame because Shelby Jordan was a Raider because he was a world champion Raider, the Los Angeles Raider, and a teammate of Mike Haynes. So, and Mike Haynes went to Marshall High. Shelby Jordan, you're too much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Laban's played his role in moving through Exposition Park as well and got that fountain there rolling. You hear some wonderful music now, Madam President, and it's appropriate the sound done because I'm about to introduce one of the music masters of our city. She is none other than Dr. Judith Christy McAllister. Give her a round of applause, won't you? If you ever find yourself at the West Angeles Church of God in Christ, you can see Dr. McAllister directing that extraordinary choir. That which you hear now can be heard on any number of Sundays there. She is an extraordinary musician. She is the founder and CEO of Judah Music Incorporated. The project is a spirited and rousing compilation of inspired songs aptly entitled "Send Judah First." Although an independent venture, this recording has been helded as one of the most anticipated events in gospel music. Dr. Christy McAllister was inspired by her mother, who served as a pianist at the church. She began studying piano at the age of seven. Her accomplishment on the piano allowed her to study at the prestigious New York High School of Performing Arts. She attended the State University of New York, where she served as Director of the Gospel Choir. Judith transferred to Oral Roberts University, where she began singing with the Richard Roberts Singers and was regularly featured on his daily television broadcast. In 1999, she was granted an honorary doctorate in sacred music from Anchor Theological Seminary. Dr. McAllister has been involved in praise and worship at some level for more than two decades, having served as the leader at the West Angeles Church for the past 12 years and then as the Minister of Music for 10. She has developed a style and approach to praise and worship that has earned her accolades that generate from coast to coast. You will want to know that she is the mother of three and is married to Darren, her partner in holy matrimony and in music, and one of our own as he served this city so well in law enforcement. So it is with a high degree of honor and appropriate praise that we recognize on this day Dr. Judith Christy McAllister for the contributions that she has made and continues to make to gospel music here and abroad.
Madam President, Councilman Ridley Thomas, I want to first thank God for this opportunity to come and to just be honored this morning. I want to thank also Jackie and Gerald Malone. Would you please stand? They are the heads of Musicians in Action, if you would come. This organization that they head recognize and support and honor musicians and ministers of music that keep the art form and life-changing art form of gospel music alive. I appreciate you. I appreciate you so very much for this honor. And I thank you, Councilman Thomas, for allowing this to happen on this day. God bless you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ridley-Thomas. The Chair would now like to recognize Councilmember Jan Perry.
I'm about to be joined here by the Jefferson High School volunteers. Come on up, everybody. Tom Labonde's a friend to all. Stand up close. Come on, so you can be on TV. Hi, I haven't seen you in a long time.
I know.
Still got long hair, though?
Yeah.
Come on up. Thank you very much, Madam President. I am very pleased today to welcome, okay, I was going to say men and women, but I guess the men didn't come, so it's all the women. Okay, I think there's one man in here somewhere. The men and women of Jefferson High School's Adult Volunteer Group. This is, this is an amazing group of people who have dedicated their time and their energy to helping other parents with everything, from the details of a parent-teacher night to locating a place where they can receive information about mammograms. Through the efforts of this group, parents of Jefferson High School receive a greater connection to the school and to their children and, obviously, the students. This program offers parents an opportunity to further their own education. It's exciting and it's an inspiration to watch, to see parents helping and encouraging and supporting each other in the community. It's through this active participation in the lives of their children that we can hope to see continued improvement in our schools and in our communities. So I want to say thank you to all of you, and to salute you and say how extraordinary you are, and thanks for working so hard to improve our community every day and enhancing the quality of life for their friends, children, and neighbors. And I wanted to, I will offer the certificates to the volunteers in the back room, since there's so many folks, but I would like to ask Rosario Manzia to come up and say a few words as representative of the group.
Do we have a translator?
If I could have the translator come up here and translate for her. Is the translator back there? Is she out there? That's weird. Okay, she must, hold on, just a second. All right. If not, if not, I'll ask. No, that's fine. I'll get it for her. She's just in the back there. You want to do it? Okay. Well, we have a special honor today. Retired councilperson and floor, floor majority whip, Mike Hernandez. Okay, Mike will do it. No, Mike's going to do it. This is Mike Hernandez.
Muchas gracias, señor Hernandez. Acabamos de conocer a ciertos señores.
She has a celebrity translator.
Thank you. Hola, señora, ¿cómo está? Buenas tardes. Mucho gusto. No, pero muchas gracias que usted se ofreció. Thank you very much for your offer. Ante todo, señoras y señores, no esperábamos estar aquí con ustedes. Before anything else, ladies and gentlemen, wouldn't expect to be here in your presence this morning. Esto es muy emocionante para todas nosotras. This is very exciting for all of us, for all of us. Todas las personas, todas las señoras que están aquí siempre estamos en la escuela tratando de ayudar a mejorar la, el ambiente y la educación de nuestros jóvenes. All of us, all these ladies present here today, we're constantly trying and putting our efforts forward to better our knowledge and education, not only for us, but also for our youth in our communities. En realidad es muy difícil, muy difícil tratar de juntar a los padres. In reality, it is very difficult trying to organize parents. Porque muchos de nuestros padres en nuestra comunidad no entienden el sistema escolar. Because a lot of parents in our community do not understand our school system. A pesar de todo el esfuerzo que hace esta nuestra escuela, la Jefferson High, por enseñarles cómo trabaja el sistema escolar. In spite of all the efforts that our school, Jefferson High, does in order to inform them of the process, of the academic process that the school provides. Pero todos los días estamos como voluntarias y aquí tenemos varias personas, pero lo hacemos con mucho gusto y con mucho amor para nuestros jóvenes. But every day, we give our services voluntarily. We do it with a lot of affection and a lot of love to the school. The mothers that you see here, we do it day after day to better the lives of the youth in our community. Le agradecemos a la señora Jan Perry y a Pamela, Pamela? Yes. We want to thank Councilwoman Jan Perry from the bottom of our hearts, and also we want to thank Ms. Pamela also. Y esperamos que no sea la última vez. And we truly hope this is not the last time. Que nos apoyen, por favor. Please continue supporting us. Gracias. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Perry, for bringing these fine women down here today. Thank you. Oh, just said, "thank you." And I think for our final present today, presentation today, the Chair would like to
Thank you, and I'm honored to have with me this morning a legend in Los Angeles and an honorary mayor of a community in my district, the legendary Charlie Tuna, who can be heard every morning on KBIG 104.3 FM. And I've said before that I wake up with Charlie Tuna, and people say, "What?" Well, because I listen to the radio when I wake up. And Charlie has been in Los Angeles radio for many, many years. Worked as morning drive personality for more stations and formats than anyone in Los Angeles radio history. In 1990, Charlie was honored by the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce with his own star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Charlie was also voted one of the top ten L.A. radio personalities of all time by the Los Angeles radio people readers. Among his radio credits, being part of legendary KHJ Boss Radio, and I, some of us old-timers remember KHJ Boss Radio, serving as both program director and morning man for Kiss AM and FM, and currently hosts cinema, 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 and internationally syndicated TV show featuring the top movies in America, each week with clips of the films. Charlie has also been heard around the world daily on the Armed Forces Radio Network, as well as on numerous nationally syndicated radio shows, including Media Americas, The Oldies Calendar with Charlie Tuna. Charlie is a resident of Tarzana, and as I stated, he serves as the honorary mayor of Tarzana, and he's served in that capacity for many, many years. And we have a resolution for Charlie Tuna, signed by the council, the mayor, the city clerk, everyone in City Hall, regarding your career, commending you and recognizing you for all the work you do. And I know that when I drive down that miserable 101 freeway, fighting that traffic every single day, and listening to you, at least it gives me some relief from that chaos and congestion. So let's hear it for Charlie Tuna, the radio personality from Los Angeles radio, here with us this morning, Charlie Tuna. And you're not afraid of microphones, Charlie, so here you go.
Thank you very much, Councilman Zine. Madam President, I was thinking on the way down here, when I first came to Los Angeles back in the '60s, Lyndon Johnson was president, Sam Yordi was the mayor, Kenny Hahn was a relative newcomer, I think, and he was there, yeah, he was there a while, but I mean relatively now.
Tom Labonde's a historian.
Yes. And then, of course, Councilman Zine probably in those days was getting a few tickets rather than writing the tickets, right? And those, but it's, it's indeed an honor to come down here, and I'm so happy, by the way, as a resident of Tarzana, we are still part of the city of Los Angeles. And I have been the honorary mayor of Tarzana for the past 25 years, and the best advice I can give to anybody in that capacity is I've always kept a low profile. That way, if they don't know you're there, they won't get rid of you. It's part of the deal. But thank you again, Councilman Zine, for this distinct honor. It's, it's part of, I just love the job I do, and I love the people of Los Angeles. They've given me a career here that I never expected, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart every day for being able to do what I love. And thank you again for having me down here today.
Thank you. Mr. Labonde would like to say something.
Thank you, Charlie. I've listened to you over the years, and just as a man in radio, what are your top five hits that you love personally? That you, you know, I mean, I like "Don't Be Cruel" and "Midnight Rambler," and, you know.
It's funny, because I was never really regarded by my kids as being cool, I think, until they found out I introduced like The Doors on the Hollywood Bowl stage back in 1968. Elvis was one of the inspirations for me getting into radio in the first place, because I loved this music. I saw him the first appearance on the Dorsey Brothers Show back in '55, and I just took a look. My parents said, "Look at this." And I said, "Wow." And that was the beginning of my love for rock and roll music, and I've played every kind of music ever since then, and done talk radio, I've done country, like Councilman Zine mentioned, sixteen different radio stations and thirty-five years of radio here in Los Angeles. But, yeah, Elvis and the Beatles, having an opportunity to meet them, and all the stars over the years, I, I'm just in absolute awe of, I'm still like a kid in this business. I really, I love the acts, but Elvis would be my, my all-time favorite. I got a signed menu from him one time when he was over at the Hilton Hotel, and my son now has that in his room frame, because he's become an Elvis fan at 22.
Good, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonde. Thank you, Charlie Tuna.
Thank you. And I've got one final, and as far as final, this is a final day for Denise, and it's because she's going to be at the USC-UCLA game. But Denise, if you'll please join me up here. Denise Chin, who's an intern in my office, and Denise will be leaving our services sadly to return to her education. She's been an intern in my office for the past few months and is extremely efficient and hard-working and very bright. She has a very bright future ahead. And she's sitting with Kathleen Lillo, who was an intern who's now paid staff after you graduated college, so there is life after college in City Hall. Denise is currently attending the University of Southern California and working on her master's degree in public administration. Prior to that, she attended UC Irvine as a music major. It is her hope of becoming a legislative analyst, and she's done well in that in my office. Denise is Dean's Merit Scholar, in the top 5% of her class, member of a sorority. She has been assisting my Director of Media Relations, Kim Friedman, who describes Denise as an invaluable asset. I know that she will continue to succeed in whatever she attempts, and hopefully will come back to work someday here in the fine City Hall, city of Los Angeles. And it's always a sad day when we have our interns leave us because they provide such a valuable resource for us, but when they come back to us in an employed capacity, they've got all that experience, and it helps us all. And I was honored to have you serving in my office. I know there's a big game tomorrow, USC, UCLA, and I've heard some of the reports back and forth, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to come up here and say a few words, so you'll be on television, that you thought you never would be here at City Hall. Denise, it's been a pleasure having you in the office. This is for you, and the microphone is yours.
Well, thank you very much. Sorry, thank you very much. Didn't think I was going to be up here. And I had a great time working here, met a lot of really great people, and I learned a lot from everyone. What can I say? Go Trojans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Brynne St. Galant, Garcia, Gruel, Hahn, Holden, Labonde, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley-Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present in the quorum, Madam President. Very good. Council is in session.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Pacheco moves. Mr. Labonde seconds. Minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved.
On the regular agenda, item number 23 is a confirmation of David D. Wexler to the Human Relations Commission. Public hearing has not been held in committee.
Can I invite Mr. Wexler forward? Members, this is an appointment to the Human Relations Commission, replacing, I believe, a retiring member. Are there any comments after Mr. Labonde seats him? Any comments by any members of the council? If not, well, there we go. Mr., Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Don't let him. Madam President, thank you. Thank you for poking at me. I appreciate it. Mr. Wexler, this is a great day for Los Angeles, because you, I've known you since, I don't want to, I don't want to divulge that for either your purposes or my purposes, but I've known you so long, and you've been such a dear friend of my family, and you've meant so much to me and all of us over, over the years. It is such, it's such a thrill for me to see you here today, and I know, because you're going to be on a terrific commission that has terrific leadership right now under Rabbi Freling. It's, it's just an extraordinary opportunity for you. It's an extraordinary opportunity for L.A. You've done tremendous public service, tremendous community things in the past, and we were just talking a little bit about your work with, I guess it was AIDS Project Los Angeles. And, and maybe because in a few moments, we're going to have a vote on World AIDS Day and start talking in a few moments about what we can do in the city of Los Angeles even better that we haven't been doing to, to fight AIDS and to fight the stigma of AIDS. Maybe there are a few comments that you'd like to make about that issue or any other issue that you see as your priorities as you step forward into this new role?
Well, I didn't expect to be talking about AIDS, but I'm always, always able to talk about AIDS. If the city of Los Angeles does anything, it has got to find a way to explain the dangers to children. And when I, I'm talking about pre-teens and teens who learn all the facts, you can give them all a test and they'll all get an A. And then, when it comes to the moment when they have to put that into, into effect, they forget it all and, and put themselves in great, great danger. If you can find a way to overcome that, you will save hundreds of thousands of lives.
Okay, you've convinced me, Mr. Wexler. You've got my vote, and I want everybody else to vote for David Wexler today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. The Chair would like to recognize Councilmember Gruel.
I'm pleased to also add some kind words about Mr. Wexler. I've had the pleasure of working with him on AIDS issues since my time in Tom Bradley's office, and continue that relationship through DreamWorks, and so pleased that you are going to be a member of this Human Relations Commission. It's really, I think, a, a big plus for the city of Los Angeles and a major coup that the mayor's appointed you to this position, and look forward to you serving. You have a lot of fans around this table and are going to have a wonderful perspective on how we can improve our human relations in the city of Los Angeles. So I wanted to add my congratulatory comments, and thank you for your service to the city, and, and look forward to many years of you participating with us and the city family.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Labonde.
To Mrs. President, Miss President, Miss, excuse me, Madam President. Mr. Wexler, thank you for serving, and thank you for all you have done for our community in the past. Let me just ask you to maybe just take a minute to throw out what you would like to see where the Human Relations Commission is in a year, eighteen months from now, after it's been energized with our new executive director and also with other members from the community.
Well, we, we have a mandate coming from an unexpected source, and he said, "Can't we all live together?"
You got to talk right into that mic.
Sorry, not used to these. Rodney King says, "Can't we all live together?" And we have to find ways to do that, whether you are a racial minority, a religious minority, a sexual preference minority. We've got to find ways to not only tolerate each other, but to accept each other and to respect each other, which is far more than toleration. If I can make a contribution to that, I will feel that I have done very well.
Well, thank you, and again, thank you for your service. The word there is that we respect each other, and all of us should hear that loud and clear that a goal of our newest appointee to the Human Relations Commission is going to strive, that all of us have that very important value to respect each other, because out of respect comes the need to be successful as a community. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonde. I think those members of the council who had questions and wanted to speak have done so. So, members, we need a motion. Mr. Weiss moves.
I would like to move that we approve the nomination of David Wexler.
We have that motion in front of us, seconded by Ms. Gruel. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Wexler. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We will send that forth with to the mayor for his signature. Next item.
On, on the regular agenda, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. It's a street vacation in Council District Five. If there are no protests, council should instruct the city engineer to proceed with the vacation.
There is no protest on item one on the regular agenda, so that matter is before us. Let's open the roll. Instructing the city attorney- us. Let's open the roll. Instructing the city attorney engineer to proceed. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved. Forthwith on that item as well.
Next item, Madam President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 2 through 21.
All right. There are no cards submitted. The public hearings were already heard in committee. Are any items through 21 to be called special by any members of the council? 2 through 21. Mr. Holden calls 21 special. That appears to be the only one called special. So the, open the roll on the other items, 2 through 20. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved. All of those are approved. Next item.
Next item is, Madam President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 40, excuse me, 24 through 41.
Oh, there are no cards, excuse me, there is our card submitted on item 41.
It's called, you said, 2 through 21.
I did. Actually, apparently 24 was also.
It was 2 through 22.
Oh, she said 2.
All right. Would you like to call 22 special, Mr. Holden?
Correct.
Then we will call 22 special as well. All right. In the next group, we had a card submitted on item 41, so we will call that special. Any items called special by members of the council? Seeing no other items called special, those matters are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
And the ordinance on item number 24 is over for second reading to December 10.
All right.
On the continuation agenda, item number 20, excuse me, item number 42 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. It's continued special event motion.
That was called special because the city attorney has some issues which have been resolved. So item 42 is before us, a special event in the 11th district. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Let us call, Mr. Weiss has asked if we take item 41 out of order. Is Mr. Weiss?
I'm working on the motion right now.
Well, let's move on to, let's recess the regular agenda and call the agenda special council meeting. We have a special counsel agenda.
Brynson Galanter-Garcetti-Gruel-Hahn, Holden-Lebon, Shmikowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Rudi Thomas, Weiss, Stein, Padilla, 11 members present. Now, question, Madam President.
All right. There's one item on the special counsel agenda for which there are a number of cards. I believe that will be called special.
The public hearing has been held in committee. It would require a motion to have a public hearing in council.
I believe we will call that for a public hearing. So we will call it special at this time. And let us go back to item 41 on the regular agenda. Mr. Weiss is here.
Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'm making a statement on this matter, which is a legislative matter, from the podium because I want you to see the depth of support that we have amassed here in the community for this important subject, namely a resolution relating to the fact that December 2 is World AIDS Day. And I'm very pleased that although our mayor is in Asia right now, Deputy Mayor Carmel Sella is here, indicating how strongly Mayor Han and the Office of the Mayor are in supporting this measure and ensuring that the city of Los Angeles does even more in the coming years to fight the spread of AIDS and also to fight the stigma and the discrimination that unfortunately has grown up over the years as a result of too much ignorance and too much prejudice relating to HIV and the AIDS virus. The city of LA is the nation's second-largest epicenter of the AIDS/HIV epidemic. And unfortunately, we have seen a very disturbing pattern over the past several years of infections rising disproportionately amongst those in our marginalized communities, whether due to ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and so on down the line. And while the city has done a great deal under some tremendous leaders in the past in this area, there is still a lot more to be done. And we need to pass this measure today so that we can rededicate ourselves to ensuring that there is no city in the nation that does a better job at fighting AIDS and fighting HIV and even arguably more importantly, for those who are living with AIDS and HIV, fighting the stigma and stopping the spread, not just of the infection, but of the stigma. And that stigma is spread not through germs, not through viruses, but through ignorance and prejudice. And so that's what we are here to do today. I would like to call upon the representatives of city government to say a few words, and then I'll note for you. We have a number of representatives here from organizations, and I will not be able to list all of you unless someone gives me a very quick and dirty list. But among the organizations represented behind me are the African-American AIDS Policy and Training Institute, AIDS Project Los Angeles, Holsa, the Los Angeles Gay and Lesbian Center, the Minority AIDS Project, and so on down the line. We'll ask for a community representative or two who's been designated to make a statement. First, let's hear from the mayor's office and from the department.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Mayor Han, I wanted to thank Councilman Weiss for being the point person on this motion and to thank the council for taking the time to consider this motion, and thank you in advance for your support. Last year, in connection with World AIDS Day, the mayor convened and formed an AIDS Leadership Council, formed consisting of the representatives from the leading community-based organizations in the city dealing with the AIDS issue. And it was meant to form a partnership, a longstanding partnership between the city and community-based organizations. We've worked hard throughout the year, and I want to thank the members of the council for all their efforts throughout the year. And we're pleased today to have the opportunity to rededicate ourselves and really bring AIDS issues to the forefront as the city faces new challenges. So again, very briefly, I want to thank the members of the committee and thank the council today. I'd like to thank and bring forward Sharon Morris from the Department of Disability to speak for a moment.
Thank you, and good morning. I also want to thank Councilman Weiss and the mayor's office and the committee for working so closely with us to bring this resolution that's before you this morning. I've worked with a lot of citizens' organizations throughout the years, and let me tell you, this is a very energized group, a very exciting group. They get a lot done. And you can expect to hear quite a bit from us as we move through the points in this resolution today and look at how the city can best address this epidemic in the 21st century.
We're now going to hear from Phil Wilson from the community and then any colleagues who wish to speak, and then we'll vote on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Good morning. My name is Phil Wilson. I'm the Executive Director of the African-American AIDS Policy and Training Institute. And I too would like to thank Councilman Weiss and the mayor's office for the work on this resolution. Shortly before his death in 1989, Chris Brownlee described AIDS in the following way: "It is the fighting back. It is the building of places to care for the living and for the dying. It is courage. It is honor. It is integrity. It is people joining forces in a time of great need. It is hope. It is sharing the burden. It is people caring for their own and finding love and surviving and believing in the future, even when we are hurting more than we have ever hurt before." As a former citywide AIDS coordinator, a person living with AIDS, but most importantly, a resident of this great city, I am very proud to be in this chamber on this day to witness the continuation of this city's leadership in the fight against HIV and AIDS. When it comes to AIDS, Los Angeles has been the city on the hill. When faced with fear, ignorance, and bigotry, with the help of AIDS activists, the city of angels has sided with courage, honor, and integrity. This city has learned, in the words of Albert Camus, "The only means of fighting a plague is common decency." Los Angeles was the first city in the country to develop a non-discrimination policy, an AIDS unit in the city attorney's office, a citywide AIDS coordinator's office, and a comprehensive AIDS policy. We have looked to the science and the data to inform city policies and programs. Los Angeles has supported needle exchange programs and housing initiatives for people with AIDS. There are some who would say that the AIDS epidemic is over. Nothing could be further from the truth. Like a deadly serial killer, HIV may have changed its MO and may be moved to other locations, but every day, AIDS claims the lives of 8,000 people worldwide. Imagine the Twin Towers in New York City collapsing twice a day, every day, twice a day, every day. Today, we are faced with new challenges, shrinking resources, new federal priorities, HIV/AIDS fatigue, and communities most at risk who have been historically marginalized and disenfranchised. The face of AIDS today is different from the face of AIDS a decade ago. Women, people of color, young people, including young gay men. Chris Brownlee also wrote, "It is a whale. It is a howl. It is beyond our grasp. It is awful. It is awesome. It is AIDS." He was right. AIDS is awful, and it is awesome, but it is not beyond our grasp. We have the opportunity to tell those folks who are impacted today that their lives are valuable and that this city will stand and will stand with them. On behalf of Dave Johnson, Chris Brownlee, Mark Ostopolis, Sandra Vogel, Marilyn Howe, Kevin Spears, Bill Meredith, Connie Norman, and the thousands of Angelenos who have died from AIDS, and the tens of thousands more who are infected with HIV, and the hundreds of thousands more who are affected with HIV and AIDS, I thank you and I challenge you to stay the course until it's over. This resolution is the beginning, but we have lots of work to do. The city AIDS office is understaffed and under-resourced. We've fallen behind in our AIDS housing efforts, and our AIDS prevention strategies needs to be re-energized. The day will come when this epidemic will be over, and it's important for them to know that we were not monsters, that we were not cowards, that some of us dared to care in the face of it, that some of us dared to fight because of it, that some of us dared to love in spite of it because it is in the caring and the fighting and the loving that we live forever. In the words of Nelson Mandela, "In the face of the grave threat poised by HIV and AIDS, it is time for us to put aside our differences and come together to address this epidemic. History will judge us harshly if we fail to do so and if we fail to do so right now." Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just going to have one additional person who would like to introduce herself and why she's here, and then see if anyone else wants to be here.
Good morning, Madam President and fellow council members. My name is Precious Jackson, and I am a treatment advocate at Women Alive. And I am very happy that Los Angeles is stepping up to the plate to fight against HIV and AIDS and to fight the stigma and discrimination among the communities of colors especially. As you know, women of color, especially African-American women and Latino women, are the highest-risk group that are becoming infected with HIV and AIDS. And among African-American community, the stigma is very high. It is the reason why some African-American women do not go into treatment or get into support groups because they fear that they're going to be rejected by their family and friends. African-American women are at the highest risk of becoming infected. And it's not just gay or prostitute or IV drug user. It is women who are businesswomen, who are housewives, or just women that work every day. Myself, I am an African-American woman, and I am HIV-positive. So I am very happy and honored to be here, and I do support Los Angeles coming, doing the resolution for World AIDS Day to stop the stigma and discrimination. Peace and blessings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The chair would now like to recognize Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other evening, I had the honor of addressing the Parks Commission in discussing the development of Las Memorias, a wall that would be a memorial to those that passed away. And I want to stand and thank you because, like those individuals, they're trying to bring attention to the very fact that our last speaker just mentioned. Because of our sense of machismo in many of our cultures, we fail to take care of the most vulnerable, which are those victims of domestic violence. Those women who fall ill, their children become ill. I'll never forget a visit I had over at General Hospital where a young woman was infected by AIDS. She was in a sick bed, and her child was with her, and we were trying to figure out what to do with the family. The individual infected her, her spouse had abandoned them. So it was a real hard case. But it made it very clear that many suffer, and our own biases, our own religious and macho biases keeps us from informing and getting informed. And for that, I thank you for taking that step and bringing this to light. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Chair recognizes Mr. Lebon.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the council, when we have awareness for whatever the cause or the day, it's very important to focus. And one of the things that's so important, and it's good to see the deputy mayor here, albeit not as tall as the real mayor, but as tall or taller than James Han on this issue, which is so important why a mayor has staff to carry the ball. It's so important to have that awareness so that makes people, I remember when AIDS broke and the fear and the very many things, misinformation. And now we have more information to educate people, and we have to educate all communities about this. So this day helps that. But every day is AIDS Awareness Day to do that. Every day is awareness of the challenges that everyone has. And I hope with our efforts with the council and the mayor, we could help get the federal government to understand how to determine dollars for people as far as how they look at the criteria, whether you have HIV or whether you, how it's determined in their formula. That's something we could try to accomplish in the next fiscal year with the federal government. But I want to thank all of you for the fight, for the long fight. And Sharon Morris, I want to thank you as the general manager of the Department of Disability, to marshal forces and to keep the awareness up, and that is so important as we educate people. And education is so important on all the issues. And this is an extremely important issue that is certainly part of the Los Angeles landscape, AIDS awareness and the prevention of AIDS, and how to live with AIDS, and how to continue to be a very valuable and contributing member of our community. Thank you all for coming down, and thank the deputy mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lebon. Chair now calls on Councilmember Gruel.
I am so pleased to stand here. And Phil Wilson and I have not seen each other since I've been elected to the city council, though he left a charming message for me that said Tom Bradley would be proud. And for those of you that are newer to the city council and others that have been here longer than I, Phil was the first AIDS coordinator for the city of Los Angeles and really was the, you blazed a trail for us to be a leader in the whole country, and your work at the White House. And I am so pleased that we can stand here today and support this resolution. But wanted to take a moment to say, Phil, how great it is to see you and your leadership and all of the people standing with you. But we fought at that time when I worked for Mayor Bradley, when the County of Los Angeles would not create an AIDS commission. So we said, "We'll create our own." And we did it with Mayor Bradley and Ed Edelman and created the first AIDS Task Force, I think, in the country, and had the position of the AIDS coordinator. And you were a constant fighter for this issue, and I'm so glad you continue that fight and Jack's leadership in introducing this motion today. But it is an issue that has not gone away. It is something we still need to address and to be able to provide the education necessary here in the United States and across the world. So congratulations today, and Phil, it's great to see you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, I just want to say that people, not only in the city Madam President, members, I just want to say that people, not only in the city of Los Angeles, but throughout the world, has been sensitized as to the devastating tragedy of the AIDS virus. And they are finding to its needs appropriately, and this resolution is going to send a message worldwide that we support that cause. I just want you to know that when I came into office 16 years ago, people didn’t always think that way. And we had a guy named Carl Beam, and that AIDS Foundation in my district, who educated a lot of people. In fact, we got the foundation, we got the hospice center right there on Adams Boulevard. There were a lot of opposition to that at the very beginning, but now it’s... they’re an integral part of the community and of the neighborhood, and they’re well-respected, and they were accepted for sure. Many programs that you get in Hollywood, I’m going to say this, by the AIDS organizations there, and we provide them lots of money, but that money doesn’t go distributed equally into the minority communities. And I think for those of you who represent that foundation in my district and throughout the Eighth, Ninth, and Tenth know that so very well. I never noticed, I would not have believed that you have that kind of difference of opinion in terms of this community has a tough AIDS problem, we should attack that, but the other community taking it very lightly. And you do know what I’m talking about. Yeah, you can’t see your head being shaken, yes, affirmatively, until... But say a lot.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. Well, we’re here to work with you. We’re glad Mr. Weiss has introduced this motion, symbol of unity, spirit of cooperation, and we support you 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
You mean Mayor Ridley Thomas?
Mayor Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I simply rise to recognize the leadership of Jack Weiss on this issue. We want to publicly acknowledge it, and thank you for bringing this forward, item number 41. And at the same time, to salute the familiar faces who stand there with you, and not the least of which are those who are still on the case, as city employees and disability and the city attorney’s office, Sharon Morris, and Phil Wilson, who has stayed the course with respect to this issue. David Schuman in the city attorney’s office has done groundbreaking legal work in this regard. And so Los Angeles has and continues to do important work. And with the dedication, the skill set of those who are continuing to speak to the fundamental principle of the dignity and worth of every single human being will cause us to continue to distinguish ourselves. And Carmel, we recognize you and the work that you continue to do, and all those advocates that are on the right side of history and justice. We thank you and salute you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Members, seeing no one else wishing to speak, item 41, the resolution relative to the city rededicating itself as the historic national leader in the fight against HIV and AIDS and discrimination surrounding that on the occasion of World’s AIDS Day. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved. We will send it forthwith to the mayor. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair would now like to recognize Councilmember Ridley Thomas briefly for presentation.
Thank you, Madam...
I’m sorry, it was Mr. Ridley Thomas. I meant to say Mr. Holden. He had a presentation briefly, introduction of some people who are here.
Just stay on point with your presentation, Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, we have from the Prince Hall, peace, Grand Lodge, AF and AM, Brother Van Hibler, Grand Master, King Solomon Lodge, number five, who dropped in on us and want to be recognized, along with Roy, Reverend Roy Lee Atkins, 33rd Degree Mason, from the Holy Star Lodge, number seven. So would you please, Scottish Rite Freemasonry, brothers, front and center. They just came down here, and it looks like they have some surprises for us, Madam President, members.
I’d like to say good morning to everybody present. On Saturday, we had a job fair, and we had invited Councilman Holman out to receive award for his outstanding work in the community that we are trying to help the children in our area. And so he wasn’t there, so we thought we could come and just hand it to him, but excuse our appearance for not being dressed because we didn’t know who was going to come into the council meeting. But I would like to say the honor of Nate Holman, Los Angeles County Supervisor, District 10 Councilman, for his participation and outstanding service for many years. Howard J. Hibler, U. Foundation, Community Outreach, November the 16, 2002. Congratulations.
Do you want to say something? No. Thank you, thank you very much. It’s like Supervisor Hahn always said, “You get rewards for things that you love to do.” It’s the kind of job that reward is always accepted, but you love to do it, and sometimes you even get paid. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. We are now going to recess. I think we have two items left, and go back and call item number one, which was on the special agenda. And I think Mr. Ridley Thomas called that special, so the Chair would like to recognize Mr. Ridley Thomas. Let me also suggest that we have a number of cards, both pro and con. The public hearing was heard in committee, but Mr. Ridley Thomas, what is your pleasure?
Madam President, thank you very much. And what I would recommend that we do is have five minutes allotted to both sides. We did have an extensive hearing on this matter this past Wednesday, where we spent two-plus hours. In addition to that, Madam President, we have had three public hearings, beginning in February all the way through September in various parts of the city on this matter. So I think the opinions and views are heard. I would move a five-minute public hearing on both sides of the issue.
All right, members, there is a motion for a public hearing, five-minute public hearing. Are there any objections? Seconded, seeing none, we will go ahead and begin. Let me first call those who have submitted cards in opposition to this item. We’ll call Melissa Richards, followed by Mark Harris. Ms. Richards and Mr. Harris can come forward.
Well, it’s almost good afternoon, but hello. I am general counsel for the California Mortgage Bankers Association. My name is Melissa Richards. Our trade association represents commercial and residential finance originators here in the state. We are a legitimate and highly regulated industry. We are licensed by at least one state agency. The agencies are authorized for administrative enforcement actions, taking consumer complaints, and acting on 17200 unlawful business practices. Our trade association supports AB 489, the California Predatory Lending Law. We worked diligently on that legislation throughout 2001, and it only recently took effect in July 1. My message to you today is simply that this proposed ordinance is premature and too risky at this time. I’ve submitted formal materials to the city attorney’s office, and your clerk has a copy of it that shows the unfortunate results of predatory lending initiatives passed at state and local levels throughout this country in the last couple of years. Unfortunately, you can expect, as the inevitable, a retraction of legitimate lenders here in Los Angeles, a pullback on secondary market investors and warehouse lenders who help us fund residential mortgage loans and do our business here for our good communities. And with the credit that will remain in Los Angeles if this ordinance is passed, you can expect a higher pricing with respect to those loans, reflective of the lack of tolerance that the investor community has on any kind of predatory lending ordinance that is passed. It’s a higher risk of doing business in the state that our investor community and warehouse lenders are loath to take on. Finally, what I will say is that our membership fully supports the financing of the American Dream of Home Ownership. We have zero tolerance for predatory lenders, and we subscribe to fair lending, fair pricing, and fair competition, responsible lending to best serve our communities. I thank you for having this time to address you today.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam President, my name is Mark Harris, representing the American Financial Services Association, and here on behalf of the 350 financial institutions who comprise the American Financial Services Association, to request that you vote no on the proposed ordinance before you. We commend Councilmember Ridley Thomas and his staff for the hard work they have put into this, as well as the Housing and Community Development Committee, but quite honestly, we feel that this is a premature effort on behalf of those citizens that Councilman Ridley Thomas and the folks who support this espouse to be representing. I have before me a document which we have sent to the mayor and each member of the city council. I also transmitted a copy to one of the deputy city attorneys earlier this morning, and I just want to summarize what this document has as its key components. It is our position that the intent to bring some level of relief and support to a number of disenfranchised homeowners here in Los Angeles will actually be set back if this ordinance is passed. We’ve made it very clear on more than one occasion that in every community throughout the country, where one of these anti-predatory lending ordinances have passed, two things have happened. Number one, the American Financial Services Association has challenged, as a matter of litigation, each of these, and with the exception of Oakland, have been successful in overturning each of these that have passed throughout the country. Number two, the very folks who we hope to bring some relief to, those subprime borrowers who a number of you have legitimate concern for, have actually been hurt in every market in which this has passed throughout the United States, most notably in Washington, D.C. after this passed. The city of Washington, upon receiving information of the drying up of subprime lending and subprime access to capital, rescinded their own action, and we would hope that it would not take a similar event to get you to undo the harm that might be caused by an ordinance of this type. So again, this is all going to be submitted as a matter of record, Madam President. I don’t have to go through it. We would respectfully request that you give strong consideration to tabling this motion at this point, at the very least, and at the most, we would ask for your no vote on the ordinance before you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. That concludes the cards that were submitted in opposition. I would now like to call those in support. Kimberly Westfalcon, Teresa Sanchez, Ruth Teague, if you could come forward. And again, I think we have a five-minute limit. Then after that, there’ll be Ernie Powell, Norma Garcia, and I understand there is one representative from Acorn who would like to speak. So if the speakers could come first.
Hello, my name is Ruth Teague. I work for the Dunbar Economic Development Corporation. I’m the director of urban development. I’ve been there, working long and hard for many years, trying to improve the quality of life for residents of the Vernon Central community of South Los Angeles. And I just want to say a few things. One is that bad loans make bad neighborhoods, and I want to commend you and congratulate you all, and thank you all for arriving at the place where we are today considering this motion. Do not be afraid of the threats of lawsuits. This is an important ordinance, and I urge you all to pass it. One of the services that our organization provides is providing financial literacy services and homebuyer education to low-income residents of the Vernon Central community in order to transition them from renters to homeowners. Many times what we find is, when we bring the Bank of America loan officers to Central Avenue to process loan applications, we have applicants who have been approved for home loans at 12% interest when they are also eligible for a Bank of America loan at 7% interest. The problem there is that we don’t have banks in the neighborhood, people don’t have access to conventional lenders, although they are eligible for conventional loans. We’ve created a two-tier banking system, which is not based on credit, it’s based on racism, and so I urge you to pass this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kimberly Westfalcon.
Hello, I’m Kimberly Westfalcon, Reston Regional Counsel for the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. Although we share its commitment to civil rights, LDF is a separate organization from the NAACP. I’m here, first of all, to commend Mark Ridley Thomas and to ask the council to join him on what is absolutely a critical civil rights issue in addition to being a consumer rights issue. This is not about stopping loans that are worth having. This is an issue of giving good loans to white bars and loans that are absolutely not worth having to black and brown bars. People around the city of Los Angeles, on one side of town, interest rates are going lower and lower every day, and on the other side of town, people are being offered loans at outrageous rates that are doing nothing but ruining lives and ruining families. L.A. is special. We need this ordinance because places like South Central are prime targets for predatory lenders. There are folks that have good credit, who bought their homes 50 years ago, have paid every mortgage payment, and someone swoops in with a phone call and puts them in a position where they lose their home absolutely. This legislation, this local ordinance, will fill critical gaps in the state legislation. For instance, the idea of having a sinny liability will prevent these loans by being bought by big banks and allowing these folks to profit from this, preying upon the most vulnerable members of our city. Again, we commend the city council, and we ask you to both strengthen and pass this ordinance, and to, again, recognize that if you do not, we are in dire need of it, and we are at risk of losing all the gains we’ve made through civil rights acts like the Fair Housing Act, and we’ll put ourselves back behind. And it was through those types of civil rights ordinances and civil rights laws that people of color, African-Americans, Latinos, were first able to buy homes in the city of Los Angeles, and now those homes are being stolen away from them by predatory lenders. Thank you.
Teresa Sanchez.
Good morning, councilmembers. Teresa Sanchez, SLU Local 347, City Workers. We wanted to speak to you this morning on behalf of Local 347. We also have our sisters and brothers here from 434B, the Home Care Workers Union. We’re part of this broad community labor coalition that worked on crafting the ordinance that’s before you, because we know that low-income workers and especially retired workers are most at risk for losing the homes they worked their entire lives to be able to afford by so-called subprime lending industry. So we would like to speak in favor, and urge you to support this ordinance, and also work with us and all the members of the organization that’s put this together, with Mr. Ridley Thomas’s office, to see how we can work with the financial industry in low-income communities in this city to ensure that people can get affordable credit and be able to remain in their homes that they worked so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Norma Garcia. I’m senior attorney at Consumers Union’s West Coast Regional Office. I’m here today to ask for your no vote to pass this very important piece of landmark legislation being considered here in Los Angeles. We thank Councilmember Ridley Thomas for his leadership, and we ask you to join him. I want to say one thing: There is nothing premature about this body acting today to pass this ordinance. This ordinance is long overdue. The city of Los Angeles, the citizens in this city, need your help to close the gap between what’s available in state and federal law and what they need here. There are big holes that need to be closed, that need to be addressed today. I urge you to move forward, and to move forward with great speed. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Ernie Powell. I’m legislative representative for ARP here in Los Angeles, and I’m here on behalf of over 355,000 members of the bond AARP in Los Angeles. And on your behalf, I ask that you pass this ordinance. It is critical. It is shameful that older homeowners are being ripped off in this way. They’ve worked their entire lives to build the equity in their homes, and the kind of deceptive sale tactics that predatory lenders do is just beyond reproach. So they need protections. They need your help, they need your assistance. This law, this ordinance is a good one. It is strong, it is right, it is correct, and we urge its passage. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Helen Coleman, and I’m a member of Acorn, and also retired from the city of Los Angeles after 30 years and six months. And I know you guys have heard many horror stories about predatory lending, so I’m going to give you just one more. Okay, I lost my home. It’s a long... from the city of Los Angeles after 30 years and six months. And, and I know you guys have heard many horror stories about predatory lending, so I'm gonna give you just one more. Okay, I lost my home, it's a long story, but I lost it in March of 2000, and really between March and May 1st, to have to move from a five-bedroom house and to try to find a small two-bedroom house with a sister that's on oxygen 24 hours a day, to realize that it's crazy. And in that apartment, when you don't have that much time to find a place, and to realize, you know the conditions that some people are living under? We were killing three and four mice a day, okay? All that I'm saying, and I'm younger, can you imagine what some of these older people are going through? Families, it's horrendous. And this bill that they're referring to, Bill 489, is quite evident. If they're all for it, it must not be strong enough. So I would urge you, please, please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, and let me recognize the people from Acorn who have stood, are standing in support of this, of your speech. You will be the final speaker on this, because we now have brought out a...
My name is Seymour Robinson. I'm a member of AARP, one of 533,000 AARP members who live in the city of Los Angeles. And we're speaking as one voice, which is that urging the city council to adopt this ordinance. When I listened to the speeches of the opponents of the ordinance, I remember what Michael Douglas, in a movie called Wall Street, said when he addressed the graduating class of Harvard. He said greed is good. That's the philosophy of the lenders. Greed is good. And the lenders are not only the small mortgage companies, they are the big banks that run the finances of the United States. I myself am a member of what Tom Brokaw chose to call the greatest generation. I'm 86 years old, I'm a veteran of World War II. Together with four other guys, we entered Numbi Beach on the morning or the afternoon of June 6th, which can be known as D-Day. And then we continued on, and were involved in deliberation in Paris. And we saw a lot of action, and I come to fore you as a veteran who had participated in defending this country. The need to defend the country is something that goes on all the time, and especially against the kind of attacks being lodged by the opponents of this ordinance. The story this morning's times, which was a wonderful story, the city considers curbs on costly home loans. My wife and I, that live in the same house now in the 10th Councilmanic District for over 40 years, we had that house paid off in 1973. Despite the fact that it's been paid off all that time, every day we get countless calls from people who want to, and companies that want to lend us money in order to refinance our mortgage. Of course, we tell them, drop dead, we're not interested. And I'm urging the city council to adopt this ordinance in the spirit that's in the preference to the United States Constitution, which said that the United States was going to set up a Congress, and one of its principal roles was to provide for the welfare of the American people. Well, this city council here has a duty to provide for the welfare of the people of Los Angeles, and adopting this resolution will go a long way in supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. That concludes the public hearing on this matter. All the other cards that were submitted to speak will be made a part of the record. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I think the public testimony speaks for itself. Those who have spoken have succinctly characterized the differing views on this basic issue of caring for and/or protecting those who are in many ways the most vulnerable in our communities. I want to take this opportunity early on to acknowledge the work of Acorn, an organization that has pushed very, very hard for us to be here. Consumers Union, Batsetic, AARP, Local 434B, Local 347, you know, the Legal Defense Fund, the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, a range of advocates who make it abundantly clear that this body is obliged to do the right thing. What's before me? Eight binders of testimony that we've heard over the past several months on the specific issue of predatory lending. This is a measured response, it is not wholesale, it is our right, it is within our scope of authority. We've looked at every conceivable, every conceivable way to do this without causing the city to be put at risk from a legal point of view, and the city attorney will attest to this very fact. Members of the council, I say this, and I will take my seat. The problem of predatory lending is pervasive. You've not heard all of the testimony that we have in committee been privy to hear, but let me just go a step further. There are persons sitting around this horseshoe who have their own personal stories about predatory lending. Yes, members of this very city council, two of which, of whom I'm aware. And I want to say to you that it is high time, after 18 months of deliberation where the motion was initially introduced, that we act in the best interest of our citizenry, particularly the seniors of our city, and pass this ordinance unanimously today, and send a message to those who would prey upon our seniors that it will no longer be tolerated in the city of Los Angeles, and I thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we had our hearing in Highland Park, we learned of what goes on in our communities. What became very evident in the hearings as well is that those folks who don't speak English, those folks who are relying on their children, who might not be adept at financing, or a neighbor who might assume certain things, file documents, and they don't realize what they've gotten themselves into until it's too late. In District 1, we have 80% of the district, people rent. The few that remain feel like they're under siege because they're always being approached by these predatory lenders. Now, the bottom line here is that we, as a body, colleagues, need to create an environment where we can allow for good lenders to surface. Those banks and institutions that should not fear or hesitate what is going on with this language, because they are not doing anything wrong. It is those lenders who have something to fear or who are hesitant, because maybe there is something wrong, and they're just not aware of it, or they need to find out what's going on with their massive corporate infrastructure. The key here, and I'm willing to support, the Chair of Housing Committee Wendy Gruhl, with an amendment she'll be coming forward, that this is a beginning step, but we must stop the bleeding today. The hemorrhaging that goes on in terms of lifeblood, of what little income is left in the terms of equity in our seniors and those people who work hard for their homes, we need to stop the bleeding. This is that measure. It stops the hemorrhaging, but it also brings us to a point, we can work further with our lenders, come together some language that makes them feel comfortable, and not be reliant totally on what the state has to offer. So with that, I want to thank all the individuals, all the entities, all the groups that Councilmember Ridley Thomas has mentioned. I want to applaud him for his leadership in this, and I'm sure that once he leaves, there'll be those of us who will carry the mantle and make sure that we continue to serve our constituents the best way possible. Thank you for your great effort.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Were there any of those meetings conducted in the Valley on this matter? What part? North Hollywood. When I look at this measure, and people say, "Don't support this because they're state legislation," concern I have is that our lower economic areas, the city of Los Angeles, are preyed upon by unscrupulous individuals. They're preyed upon by unscrupulous criminals, they're preyed upon by unscrupulous car dealers, and they're preyed upon by the industry that is very greedy. When I look at the region of the West San Fernando Valley, where you have expensive homes, attorneys, and influential people, the predators don't prey on them. The predators know better. There's this old saying about, "Read the small print." And when you look at the documents, there's a lot of small print. And when an individual gets that document promising they're going to receive this windfall, and they sign that document, they then have signed their life away, they've signed their savings away, and oftentimes they sign their home away. And I recognize the urgency and the policies that we must set in this city to protect the people who are victimized, whether victimized by the thug on the street, or victimized by a banking industry that wants to prey on these people. So, looking at the state legislation, and maybe there's positive with that, but the concern I have is how do we protect the innocent victims who are being solicited by the industry? And if the industry had policed itself, we probably wouldn't be here. We probably wouldn't have state legislation. And when the industry doesn't police itself, our state legislators, our federal legislators, our local legislators need to intercede to protect those people who sign the documents who believe it's going to be done right. And sadly enough, it's not done right. Yesterday, I did my police duty down in South Central Los Angeles and spoke to a lot of homeowners who are concerned about predator lending, who are concerned about these glorious offers that come their way. And unfortunately, some of them buy into it, and then they become the victims. And as we see people in this chamber this morning, so the banking industry, the mortgage industry, those predators have the well-financed attorneys, have the well-financed establishment to protect them, but they don't prey throughout the entire city. They don't prey in West L.A., they don't prey in Pacific Palisades, because they know they can't get away with it. But they get away with it where they know they can get away with it, but the message needs to be sent, you're not going to get away with it in the city of Los Angeles, period.
Mr. Zine.
Just one more, one more comment, Madam Chair, and because of that, I'm going to vote yes on this, because it's the right thing to do.
Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, there's nothing better than a convert, huh, Dennis? There's nothing better than a convert. You're not a traitor, man, come on. He's our supporter and our friend. First of all, I just want to commend Councilmember Ridley Thomas for pushing this forward quickly and really bringing this to all of our attention here. Many of us have been seeing this happen throughout the communities that we represent and throughout the districts in the city of Los Angeles. I personally can tell you that my very first interest in even going to law school was based on consumer fraud occurring at Malval Plaza. I'm not sure if you remember, they used to have this old practice where they would sell a family, in this case, it was an organ, and they'd say, "We'll give you monthly payments for $100 for their first six years," and it ends up $7,200 for a $2,000 item. And I just think that basic consumer fraud is probably one of the most repulsive things that we have to deal with, because many times they take advantage of people's limited language skills or limited reading skills, or most appropriately, they take advantage of the person's desire to want to do something good, whether it's fix their home, whether to get a product for their family, and they prey upon people when people are trying to do something positive for themselves, and that's the most sick thing about this whole situation, is people are really trying to improve things, and they get victimized by these individuals. So I support the motion, the resolution, the city of Los Angeles stands with Acorn and 347, 434B. I know. Bam Bam's one of our biggest constituents and advocates, right? So just know that we're with you, and I anticipate the council will support the entire motion. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I am pleased to stand here in support of my colleagues, Mark Ridley Thomas and Nick Pacheco, and those of us who understand the day-to-day horrifying impacts of predatory lending. As people who serve so many people who are in dire need, who are vulnerable, particularly elderly homeowners, we already know that predatory lenders drain equity from those homeowners in many ways through excessive loan fees, costly and unnecessary insurance policies, and frequent refinances without the homeowner understanding what that means. So I, for one, can tell you that on a daily basis, we get calls in the field office from elderly people who have been taken advantage of and don't even understand how they have been taken advantage of, have no idea how to get out of that situation, and are at risk or have already lost their homes. Just as a bit of information, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac had estimated that about 40% of the borrowers in subprime loans would qualify for lower-cost prime loans immediately if they had the opportunity, if there was an outlet within their reach, or some way for them to make a connection with conventional banking institutions. So I'm going to stand in support of this today, and I hope that my colleagues will join me. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair calls on the committee chair, Councilmember Wendy Gruhl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you've heard from so many of my colleagues, and as Chair of the Housing Committee, I'm pleased we have this item before you, and want to again acknowledge the leadership of Councilmember Ridley Thomas, who has been a fighter for this issue so long, and my other colleagues have been so eloquent, Reyes and Zine and Mr. Pacheco, about the importance of ensuring that predatory lending does not exist in the city of Los Angeles, and that we will stand strong to ensure that those elderly, those families who are first-time homebuyers, and I remember when I bought my home, how scary it was. Thank goodness I had my mom and dad, who helped me through it as a young person, to go through that, and I think that's just what many of the people here from Acorn and others want, is to have that council and someone who will stand by their side with them. And I want to also congratulate all of you for your leadership and commitment, because you've been there everywhere, whether it was in the San Fernando Valley, East L.A., Mark's district, I think the first hearing when I wasn't even elected yet, and all being here today. So I know that what we want to do is get this to move quickly. We did in our committee, ensure that there was a 60-day period of time where we'll look at the rules and regulations, that we'll come back to the city council. There were some concerns mentioned by the lenders that we listened to, we took a position. However, on the ordinance, as we currently see it, that it is critical to move forward. I would like to, unless there is any disagreement within this body, to direct the Housing Department to work with not only the council offices, but legal rights advocates, lenders, et cetera, as we move forward to get their input between now and the time the regulations come forward, so that you have that input from the beginning, and that there's no then complaints that there was not participation. So I'd ask the department to do that as well, and to include, Mr. Reyes wanted to make sure that we had council offices, obviously the city attorney and community groups would participate as well. I'm looking forward to that coming back so that we can expeditiously move this forward, and look forward to Councilmember Ridley Thomas's leadership on the state level, as we stand tall that predatory lending, I'll say it again, will not be accepted in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Is that an amending motion?
I believe it's an amending motion to the committee report, not to the ordinance. All right, the chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. An awful, awful lot's been said during this debate, a lot of, a lot of good points. I just have five additional points that I would like to make. Thank you, Mark Ridley Thomas.
The chair recognizes Ms. Galanter.
You know, I know you know that this is not a new issue. This issue has been around for a very, very long time, and I can remember when I worked for the National Health Law Program, which I think is even before Wendy Gruhl worked for Tom Bradley, the Legal Aid Foundation, and Elena Ackler were out hunting down the people who were hoodwinking the elderly with lien sales contracts, and we've been, we've been over this for many, many years, but unfortunately, we've had to do it on a case to do it on a case-by-case basis. And each time somebody like you, Helen, has gotten caught in the web, you've had to go talk to Legal Aid, you've had to make sure the Legal Aid had enough funding to be able to help you, and you've had to, you and they have had to try to resolve these things one house at a time, one nasty loan at a time. I think the relief that will come from our finally enacting an ordinance here is, I hope, will make it a little easier, not just in preventing abuses from happening, but you know, even with the law, abuses happen, but in making it easier to redress the problem. When, when somebody does get away with it, we need to, or attempt to get away with it, we need to be able to stop them and go after them. So I certainly want to say that after all these years, it is a very nice feeling to know that we are on the verge of taking this action today. And I, obviously, if you haven't figured it out by now, will also join in supporting this ordinance.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I support this ordinance and I support the work that Mark is doing. But Mark, I want to ask, as we broaden the table, then in the next few weeks, sixty days, that we ask all of you, we ask all the institutions, the lending institutions, to get around that table, help craft the right thing, to make sure it's effective. I think of the time in life, and our birth is the most important thing, and God bless our parents. And then when we're fortunate to get a mate, to get married, it's extremely important. It's a wonderful day. And when we have children, it's an absolutely wonderful day. And also, when you close on a house, it's an absolutely wonderful day. But then when you find out what you closed on and get a bill or get the papers that are not what you thought you got, it's absolutely the worst day. To, to see those days, and those days are very big days in one's life. And if I could do anything in my district, and by the way, North Hollywood Community Redevelopment Agency has first-time homebuyers program, and they'll help you buy a home in North Hollywood if you're looking. Out in North Hollywood will help you. But, Mark, we need the help of the industry to give us ideas, to make sure they are, because they're being tarnished by some who are not like us, who want to help people, who prey on people, predators, who prey on people. Not all the industry is like that, and they shouldn't be like that. They should be the first at the table to say, "This is what we could do to help people make loans, to make sure that they're right and conform them, and not fool them into signing something." So I would just ask that the Housing Department, in this period of time, have a group around the table, including industry, including advocates, including council and mayor, whomever city attorney, to make sure that the best ability of all is there to do the right thing. Because it is a great day when you do have a loan that you can afford to pay and not be fooled and not be hurt on. So I thank you for your leadership, Mark, and thank you for all coming down and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Madam President, I'd like to have the city attorney in front and center at the table, please, for a few questions. Are you prepared to ordinance and is it okay according to formal legality?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we should not be worried about being sued over this. And what would be the consequences and whether or not we preempted by state or federal from doing what we're doing?
There would be no damages per se because the city has nothing to gain from it. There might be attorney's fees.
Are we preempted by state law?
No.
Can they argue that?
Yes.
But you don't think they'll be successful?
Correct.
I see, okay, well, just want to put the question there. And you know, when I answer a question, she just let my time just run. Mark Harris, are you still here? And Seymour Robinson? I just want to get, Mark Harris is on the other side of this issue. The fact of the matter is that he grew up in my district, he was my intern from high school in the state capital. He became an attorney, he went on to work for Ron Brown, Secretary of Commerce, vast amount of experience. And I know when you speak and say vote no, you're talking about vote against those guys. You support the delinquents who are good, but the ones that are bad, we can't control them, and we can't tell one from the other. You've got Seymour Robinson here, who's been around and fought in World War II, the hero in D-Day. He lives in my district and has been there for a long time. He's on the other side of the issue. You grew up in the district, Seymour's been there for a long time, and I love Seymour and I've known him forever. But I just want you to know that we had some real bad experiences with the bad lenders. We're not talking about the good ones that you represented. I can go back to supervisor Hahn when the city of Los Angeles was involved in this kind of practice. I'll repeat, the city of Los Angeles, we had a lighting district. The lighting district's money assessment was being assessed separately, you may be aware of that. And it was not a part of your, your tax bill. With the kind of L.A. you get one tax bill. And so what the city would do is list all these delinquents, because the senior citizen would assume they paid off their tax bill, and the delinquents would be posted, and these lenders would come down and buy up those liens that the city had on the property. Can you imagine the city being implicated in something like that? It turns out that people began to lose their home, they lost their property, predatory lenders. Then they would sell it, turn it over, the next day turn it over. You couldn't find your property after all, until you're being evicted from your home. So not only is those lenders out there who had problems, but government has been assisting them in having those problems. So I'm glad to see today that the government is saying, "Hey, let's straighten this out. We've solved our problem, we've corrected our own problem. Now you have to correct yours." And I would say that these lenders should be put out of business. Mr. Thomas, thank God, is going to go through the legislature. It may be a tough fight, but this, this ordinance right here, this before us, is a darn good ordinance, should be used as a model to be introduced in legislation, Sacramento. I do know that they have a bill up there, but not as concise and precise and protective as the one before us today. Notwithstanding 434B, they've never done anything for me, they've never supported me in any election, but that's okay, I'm going to vote for them anyway.
For a second time, the Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues. I want to make sure that we're not sending mixed messages, that we are being very clear that the folks that we need to protect are the ones that are being victimized by those who are unscrupulous. I'd also share with you that yesterday I had a great day in that in Highland Park, we provided keys to low-income families, but without the help of Bank of America, City Bank, California Bank Trust, Cal Fed and Enterprise Foundation, they would not have been able to attain and live that dream. Citigroup, I believe, went ahead and implemented its own policies because a subsidiary they had basically adopted, became part of their corporate umbrella, but in adopting that subsidiary, they inherited all these problems, and they were sued to the tune, I believe, is $215 million. And they policed themselves as a corporate entity. So it's not like you have Simon Legretti, then you have the guy with the white hat saving the day. It's not like that, it's much more complicated. And we are willing and working with Councilmember Gruel and the committee and this working group to come to a point where everyone hopefully can come to terms with policies that's healthy for the region, for the city, and that we don't redline ourselves because industry chooses to leave, but we develop ways in which we can continue moving this market, build access to housing through creative financial means, and doing it in a way where we don't penalize our communities. And I believe that truly is the spirit of our intent here, and we are going to need your expertise, those in the industry, and those who have been victimized, to understand what is that comfort margin. So with that, your unanimous vote.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, but most appropriately, may I take this opportunity to acknowledge the hard work of the Housing Department, Gary Penny and the entire staff for the work they've done. They deserve a big round of applause. The city attorney was able to answer the questions rather emphatically because they have done extensive, detailed work to make sure that the city's interests are protected. And we wish to acknowledge the office of the city attorney and those persons specifically who worked on that. The mayor's office is weighed in, the chief of staff is here. Mr. McCosker, would you wish to have a word?
Thank you very much, Councilman President, members of the council. The mayor wanted me to thank you all very much for bringing this so quickly through committee, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Reyes for working so hard on this, and especially Mark Ridley Thomas for working so hard on all of this. His thought and his message is that he appreciates how quickly this ordinance is making it through the council and that at a time when we have all worked so hard to bring the Housing Trust Fund to reality, this is another piece that makes sure that the Housing Trust Fund has wings, that it has an opportunity to do all of the good for the city that we have worked so hard for. So, the mayor urges, and I vote on this measure, and to move this forward to enact a new law. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Madam President, I urge a unanimous vote on this entire matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holden has pushed his button for a second time.
Mr. President, members, when we get a unanimous vote, I'm going to move forthwith to the mayor, and the mayor should join us in the ceremony, signing it like right now. I want to be a part of that. And the mayor is Mayor Mark Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Holden, let me, let me let the public know that we will, there's no one now wishing to speak, so the matter will be before us. But there is no one else wishing to speak, so we will now be voting on the matter, but there are only twelve members here today, excuse me, there are only eleven members here today. And for the first reading of an ordinance, even if it is unanimous, it has to come back for a second reading a week from today, which really will be earlier in December because we're not meeting until Friday.
Well, they will have members on Tuesday.
There should be.
Where are they, out of the country or someplace?
Mr. Holden, at this point, there are eleven members. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
I told them not to take all those people.
Move the agenda, Madam President.
All right, the matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That matter is, does have eleven votes for it today. It will be voted on a second time, and Madam Clerk, do you have the date?
That will be December 10th.
On December 10th, the matter will come before us for one more vote, and then it can go to the mayor for signature if there are, if the majority vote for it. Next matter?
Madam President, do you wish to adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting?
Yes, we will adjourn the special meeting and go back. The Chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, let me just simply say that when we list those who were helpful, I want it to be recorded as well that the office of the chief legislative analyst, so does the office of the city administrative officer, are immensely helpful in this regard as well, and they should be duly acknowledged for their hard work.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number 21 on the regular agenda was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item 21 on the regular agenda.
Madam President, it's been a long day, and this is an agreement between the airport. If you could just talk to him about 21, then we can already move 22 as well, about you have Southwest Airlines contract agreement here on 21. You're welcome. America West, Southwest Airline, you're into a contract for 12 years. Would you tell us about that, sir?
Yes, good afternoon. Just Romo, Los Angeles Airport. First of these two items is a lease agreement, a 12-year lease agreement between the city and Southwest Airlines as well as America West Airlines. The reason it's a 12-year agreement is the time it's needed to amortize some improvements that had to be put into the hangar in order for it to operate.
Well, are they currently operating out of Ontario?
Yes, they are. This is actually a relocation and a betterment of their operations. They had previously operated out of an old hangar called the Chaffee Hangar, which is substandard relative to fire life safety.
Right. Who's going to pay for the construction of the new hangar? Has that already been done?
That's already been provided for. The airport paid for the upfront cost to do the improvements, and it's being repaid through the lease payments over the term of the lease.
Lease payments, you're only getting about $2 million. You're not getting that much. $2,000, $2,300 for 12 years.
No, that, that is an act, that's per year.
Per year?
Yes.
So that's the lease agreement. That won't pay for the improvement, will it?
Yeah, well, the, the lease rate that's calculated here is comprised of the hangar rate, which is $5.75 per year, and then a component for the building improvements that were put in to build out offices, to put in a truck dock, other operational leads for, for the belly cargo.
We just voted for a contract agreement like this for another airline about a month ago, and they paid for the construction of the new hangar, the new, as well, not just the hangar, but the new terminals.
I believe if the item you're referring to was for the approval of the lease with Guardian?
Yes.
Yes, that's actually an FBO type of a lease. The hangar is, that they're operating out of with office space is actually in place. They're proposing to actually add to that hangar, actually construct a separate hangar, which they will finance themselves, but the rental rate for that particular project is, those improvements are already in, are being paid for.
All right, okay, fine, go ahead. Next item.
All right. Did you also want to ask questions about item 22, Mr. Holden?
Yeah, why, yeah, tell us about 22 as well.
Item 22 is a replacement lease with Centra Air Freight Services. They're an existing tenant at LAX. This is simply a replacement lease. It accounts for a rental increase for the land as well as an increase in the building rental. It's a five-year term with a 90-day termination provision.
And on what basis would you terminate? Why would you?
The termination provision is a standard provision that the airport typically puts in its agreements, and this would be if, for whatever reason, the airport needed that parcel of land or that building for some other purpose.
You're getting about $1 million out of this for five years, huh?
That's correct, sir.
All right, Madam President.
All right, items 21 and 22 are before us, as recommended by the committee. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Next item?
Madam President, next item is a matter not on the council's agenda. It's a motion presented by Councilmember Holden and seconded by Councilmember Glanter, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
On November 6, 2002, fire forced the vacation of a very low-income tenant from a rental unit at 4927 August Street. Ms. Myrtle White, age 71, has been temporarily sheltered by her relatives, but is in urgent need of assistance in procuring permanent replacement housing. The Los Angeles Housing Department was notified of Ms. White's plight this past Monday, November 18th. City has adopted an interim program for assisting tenants dislocated by fires and other natural causes, and this resident is eligible for assistance under the interim guidelines for calamity-based displaced tenant relocation assistance pursuant to section 54954.2b2 of the Government Code and pursuant to rule 23 of the Rules of City Council. The City Council must first make findings that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and the need for action came to the attention of the City Council subsequent to the posting of the agenda for today's council meeting.
All right, we refer to the city attorney as to the rationale for the findings. Let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Okay, the matter is before us, as recommended, to provide the relocation assistance. Is there any question? Anyone wishing to speak? If not, then that matter in motion is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That matter is approved. We will send it forthwith. Anything else on the desk?
That's, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
There were no public comment cards submitted. Is there anyone wishing to speak in the audience? We have a gentleman. Would you want to come forward at this time and make sure you fill out a card, but please come forward and give us your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Oringer, and actually I did submit a, a card for item 41.
All right, this is the time to hear from items not already heard that were publicly heard, so we did hear from people on 41, and thanks for being here.
So will there be any point, time today where I can make a comment?
If you want to make it very briefly, I'll allow it now at the public comment time.
Okay, my name is Mark Oringer. I'm a person living with HIV and AIDS. I have been living with HIV for 15 years and 10 of those years with AIDS. I want to thank City Council for unanimously approving the resolution 41. I chose great support and leadership for the city of Los Angeles. I also happen to sit on the laycheck committee as well, and one of the items here that, that is addressed is, is the city's... addressed is the city's affirmative responsibility for decent and safe housing. And my concern here, and it's a rare opportunity to be able to speak before the full city council, is that we in Hopla are facing some major funding cuts. I know some of the members on city council are aware of it, because they sit on the certain committees that address these issues. But in the manner in which the city has taken on the role of this resolution, I am really arguing on two points. One point, one is that we keep current funding levels at where they are and absolutely see no cuts in services, in housing or supportive services for that. And the other issue is that for a number of months, two critical positions, AIDS coordinator for the city and program manager for the Hopla program have been unfilled. And I think as, if we're going to maintain leadership in this arena, that this needs to be addressed and addressed quickly. And communication between all commissions and committees that deal with AIDS and AIDS funding and AIDS issues need to be addressed. So thank you.
Thank you. There is no one else wishing to speak during a public comment period, so the public comment period is closed. Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused December 20th for personal business, and that meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused?
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused December 11th to leave at 11:30 for city business. That also meets council policy.
Hahn is excused?
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused for city business on November 27th. A motion is required.
Mr. Pacheco moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on December 10th and 17th for personal business, and on December 20th for city business. The 10th and the 17th meet council policy, and the 20th, a motion is required.
Mr. Labange moves, Mr. Holden seconds. That matter's approved.
And Councilmember Zine requests to be excused December 10th to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Zine is excused. That clears the desk. Thank you. Is there, yeah, forthwith on item 31 per Mr. Holden's request?
And is it one, the special item one? Not special, but special agenda?
Special agenda has been completed and special.
And item one on that agenda forthwith as well?
Yes. It's not can't go forthwith, it has to come back second reading ordinance.
Oh, it does? Oh, okay.
All right, council, are there any announcements, members of the council? Mr. Reyes?
The motion's special one.
It's active on, Mr. Holden.
We want that forthwith.
That will go forthwith as well, it already has. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In this great city, we have this great tradition, a great game that we're going to have tomorrow, USC versus UCLA. I must say, each school has experienced its streaks of winning and losing. It's always when the turning point happens that's the most exciting. And tomorrow will be no different. Hopefully, we'll have the spirit that we have as one city, enjoying this great tradition. I have relatives graduated from USC, good high school buddies from USC, and great UCLA members as well and fans, but I thought, in the spirit, I'd play the UCLA chant.
(cheering)
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 Thank you for the announcement, Mr. Reyes. Any other announcements? Mr. Labange has an announcement.
That's great, and we wish great activity, great day. They got to drive early there to get to Pasadena, because parking's tough. But I hope the children's win. Because, I know, I said your microphone, I know. The park will say, okay. Anyway, but that's the way it is this year. But I want a good game, and also to make sure that all the students have a good time and drive safely over there. Members, I just wanted to also reflect too, that this is a day that's very important in the history of our country. 39 years ago today, it was what was termed to be the four dark days in American history with the death of John F. Kennedy. And I dropped my daughter off at Island Host School this morning, the same place where I was 39 years ago on a lunch break, when Mrs. Hurst, who's still living on Hyperion Avenue, was the lunch supervisor, who came walking by our bench, and I asked her why the flag was half-masked. And the flag was at half-mask because of the violent death and the assassination of John F. Kennedy. And I would just like to ask, Madam President, as we adjourn today, if we could also remember the memory of John Fitzgerald Kennedy, who truly was a part of our lives, those who were in school at the time and affected by that tragedy.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Are there any adjourning motions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, council's adjourned.